And the three dots down, down, way down there. Then full screen? Yeah, that's better. Good. Okay. I will call this regular meeting of Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:01. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So, public input, don't have any public, and no correspondence that isn't part of our project reports. So approval of meeting minutes, I will make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of March 26, 2025, a second, second from Dave Resendez. And does anybody have been reading over the minutes, any updates, changes, questions? Everybody good? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Good. I don't think anybody, oh, Dave Olson needs to abstain. He wasn't here last night. Okay, I'm moving on with our old business, our Bethel High School HBAC upgrade. Rick Davidow did let us know that he would be away for the vacation or on vacation or away this for this meeting, and he let us know that someone would be giving us an update, and I see we have Geraldine zooming in from far out west. So what you got for us?
I actually, I actually do have an update because I was expecting Mark to be on the call. I just know briefly that work, you know, preparation work is progressing. Abatement work is progressing. I think that you have the, you had the last update at the last meeting that the state was, had verbally approved the plan to abate, and they're making a second site visit or a site visit. I think this coming week, maybe Tyler has more information on that. And things are progressing in terms of the, the phase of the project that we're in now before major work begins.
Yeah, I was filled in earlier today that the state is going to be onsite next Tuesday at 9:00 AM to do a walkthrough, and they want to, they wanted to visually see the plan onsite before they gave their final approval, is what I was told earlier today by Save More.
Yeah.
So is that, they won't issue that letter until they come onsite and do the rest of whatever they feel like they need to do, is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct. Good, good, good. And then, obviously, I think we were told last time that Pinoni had finished their review of the document of what happens with the stuff when it gets taken away, and they okayed that. So that's part, kind of part of the process too. But we can't really go anywhere until we get that letter or go any further with any of the work that, the abatement work that needs to be done until they finish, the state comes out with their letter, correct?
That's correct, and the timing, I think, is still good in that the abatement work was not going to proceed until the end of April. And so there, there are these couple of weeks in here to get the final approval and for Dr. Carver to issue the letter to the community. I think we're, we're on schedule with all of that.
Is there work scheduled to be done during the spring break?
I believe there is, yes. I think that that is part of the plan, yes.
But is that abatement work also, or is that just? No abatement, got it, they're shaking their heads, no abatement, okay.
No, I think, I think they have to wait for that site visit to get the final letter before they can, I thought that they were talking about Geraldine the week of like the 21st, the 24th.
Other than that, right.
Correct, correct, for the abatement, for, that's the plan, yes, the, this piecemeal abatement, that's correct.
Yes. And that's mostly done then off hours, like after school or whatever. Obviously, lots of scheduling, as you had talked about, making sure that certain areas of the the school are available, because we know, even though school ends at 2:00 something, there's still lots of stuff going on in the building, so making sure areas are available. So, Mark just jumped on, so Mark, I don't know, what else you might have for, an update for us?
Really, just, I'm not sure what Geraldine already talked about, but the
Everything is good.
Everything should be good. I talked to Jason from Save More today just to get a update to make sure that we're still on schedule and things are still moving positively, and he felt good about progress that we're planning to make, so I, I'm kind of hanging my hat on him and hoping that everything he's pointing to is correct. So, because when Rick went off on vacation, he gave me an update too, and he, he thought we were moving along well, and that as soon as we get the final approvals from the state for the asbestos abatement plan, we'll be ready to rock, and they're planning to start working, not next week, but the week after on second shift.
Yeah, that's what Geraldine was saying, and that there's going to be a walkthrough. So.
Yeah, there's a little walkthrough on Thursday at 9:00 AM for the, one of the state reps, not representatives, but one of the state folks from the Asbestos Commission is going to walk through the project.
And will
Before they give their final blessing, I
Right, and issue the letter, so will someone from Save More or their subcontractor be there? Who's going to be a part of that?
Yeah, somebody from Save More as well as their asbestos abatement contractor.
Okay, and then, is Rick going to be there, is he back?
Yeah, Rick should be back by then.
So he'll do that also?
Yes.
Great, okay. Anything else you need to let us know? I mean, there's obviously no big budget changes because we have hadn't had any big, well, we have invoices to deal with, we'll do that a little later. But there isn't anything else that we're pending, waiting on?
The only, the only thing we had was the insurance issue, which I don't know if you spoke about it already, I'm sorry, I was trying to get in.
Nope, haven't gotten there yet, that'll be
That, that's the only thing that we, we thought was important that the commission should know about, so.
Okay. So if anybody has any questions other than the invoices, do that now, otherwise we'll jump into that. Good, so we're going to start with, we have two invoices, one for Kolaronan, which is their basic monthly, we'll just do that really quickly because there shouldn't be any questions on it, and then we'll get into the other. So I will make a motion that we approve Kolaronan invoice number 22021 dot 02 dot 01 dash 4 dated March 31st, 2025. High school phase three services, construction administration services, $3,662 and 50 cents.
Second?
Got a second from Dave Olson, again, this is their construction administration amount divided by however many months. So they're not, you know, some months they work more hours, some months they work less hours, they're not providing an hour by hour for us on this. So we have a second from Dave Olson, any other questions on this? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're done with that. And then the next is surprise, so I don't even know how to start with this. Back in February, we approved a, we, the commission, were given an invoice to approve on builder's risk insurance. And we approved an amount 7,000 something, something, I have to open it up and see here. 7,400 and, why is it way over there? $450. Builder's risk that we were not expecting, however, it was all explained to us, this would be covering the, the time of, as it says, effective date, and it goes to 12/20/2025, that particular one that we did, and then last week, we got another one. So I'm not even going to make a motion, I think we're going to, please discuss and explain, somebody it was explained to me by Jen, Brad, and Jason, who's on from, I don't know if he's from Kerma or from the US whatever insurance, but I understand that it's necessary. I understand that there are times when the town covers it, but it has to do with the amount and something, something, and I didn't want to try to explain it to these folks and not get it right. So I've got all these people up there, hopefully, that are going to help us understand why our contingency is going to go down another $30,000. Who wants to start?
Geraldine, I'll start. I'll start. So I know you're all aware of the need for builder's risk, so this is insurance that typically an owner takes out to cover risk that increases based on the construction project, so it covers, you know, additional damage to the property, it'll, it'll cover vandalism, it'll cover theft of the contractor's equipment, all of the, all of the risks that are involved in having an ongoing construction project. We, we always recommend that this be put in place, it protects the owner, protects the owner's assets, it protects the owner from being at risk for things that, that the contractor then wants to recover on. It is also standard language in the, in a, in a construction contract, so in the case of this project, the actual contract signed with Save More said that the owner will carry builder's risk to cover the contractor and the owner. The, the, so, so that is the invoice that was approved earlier, the 7450 is totally in line with the value of the construction project. That is an annual premium, it was paid all at once out the door, we've added it to the budget. This, the new invoice, as I understand it, and Jason will help me out with this here, as I understand it from speaking with Brad and with Jason, is that this is an increase in the regular property life and liability coverage on the high school building. And if you, those of you that were involved in the Johnson and Rockwell School renovations, you will say, well, we didn't see this on the other project, which was true, and my understanding there is that in the case of that, those renovation projects, the same company underwrote the builder's risk and the property liability insurance, and they were able to offer sort of an offsetting discount so that the town did not need to book an additional insurance cost to the project. In this case, however, the, the two types of insurance are being written by different companies, and and Jason can add to this, my understanding from emails is that it is because the value of the construction project is low compared to the value of the building, they had some difficulty finding an underwriter that would cover both of the projects. At the end of the day, the CIRME policy is, they, they underwrite the insurance for the building generally, typically. And they are presenting an increase in the premium based on their risk with the construction project going on. So both, both charges, the 30,000 and the 7450 are legitimate insurance charges. The town finance department chooses to attribute them directly to the project budget, to this project budget, to these project costs, which is sure acceptable, these are project costs that the town would not have other than having this project going on. And that leaves us as the project team with the requirement to, to reduce the owner's contingency in order to add this $30,000 charge to the project budget. Jason, can you help me out there? Did I cover it?
Yeah, that's great, if you ever want to drop, we're always, you're always looking for good talent, so you could try and drop in sometime. Yeah, so, so first off, so I'll backtrack. Back in November, we had notified Kerma that this project was going on, and, you know, because as the property insurer, you know, we have to notify them that there's going to be a construction project at one of their properties. And so we informed Kerma that we would look to secure builder's risk insurance for that project, and and she is absolutely correct, for the Johnson and Rockwell Schools, when we placed that builder's risk insurance, because the value of those renovations were quite large, we were able to identify a market that would ensure both the building and the project on one policy. That's normally how, how these things go, right? The property insurance and the builder's risk go hand in hand. In this particular instance, because the value of the, of the project relative to the building was, was so far apart, we could not get a builder's risk underwriter who would be willing to take on the property insurance for the building, the only one to insure the project. So I notified Kerma of this, of this fact back in, I want to say it was late November. And we said, hey, you know, we need you to stay on the existing building for this project, which, I mean, we, we know, we've worked with Kerma on over close to 70 towns across the state, so this is normal, especially with towns that have older and even historical buildings in some cases, you know. This request of Kerma was not unusual. But, you know, normally, in, in our experience leading up to this point, is that Kerma has been, has been fine with offering that property insurance for free, and because they are, because the town carries the insurance, and so they, they've, you know, up until this point have you know, offered that property insurance at no extra charge. Because of some recent loss experience that they've had of contractors burning downtown buildings, you know, they have now begun charging, which, you know, was, was news to me when I was talking with the underwriter back in November. But at that time, they said they would only charge potentially if, you know, given that certain contract language was in place. So we got the, I worked with the town attorney to get the contract language exactly how the, how Kerma wanted it, and, and that was the end of it, you know, we didn't hear from them until about three weeks ago, when they kind of surprised us with this invoice, so I apologize that this invoice was not communicated at the time when the builder's risk insurance was purchased. You know, I know it was a bit of a surprise, it was a surprise to me, so I do apologize, the communication of that probably wasn't the best, and I kind of notified Kerma going forward that they notify us of these things ahead of time so that we can plan appropriately, but as Geraldine mentioned, the 30,000 is specific to the property insurance for the building while it's under construction, and I did confirm with the Kerma underwriter that it is a one-time charge for the duration of the project. The only other thing that I will add is that had we secured building insurance under the builder's risk policy, you, the, the town would have paid that premium whether Kerma charged it or the, or the, or the builder's risk carrier charged it, so so in this case, you know, the, the town would have paid this premium either way. You know, we, you know, we were successful in placing that property insurance with the builder's risk market, so that's sort of the, the backstory and sort of filling what Geraldine had already mentioned, but, but, but the the 30,000 specific to the, to the property insurance for the building and the builder's risk insurance is specific to the project as she, as she just described, so hope that gives some context to the, to the situation.
So we're suffering because New Melford High School's roof caught on fire?
More than once.
A couple of times?
More than, more than once, and I wasn't going to say, you know, I wasn't going to say it on camera, but I am glad that everyone knows what we're talking about, but yes, that was, that was sort of the impetus for the change in underwriting guidelines from Kerma on, on that, so, so yeah, so essentially, you know, that was sort of the, the, the tipping point, I think, when Kerma started, you know, changing their underwriting guidelines around that, so.
So the, the 74, whatever, is builder's risk, this is additional insurance on the building itself, not builder's risk, but building itself during the project, covering whatever might happen.
Correct.
Now, the effective date of the July 1st, 2024, July, does it affect the date of the whole insurance on the building? It's not reflect, because this project, this is, the 30,000 is the life of the project, right, which goes past July 1st?
Yeah, so we asked the, I had asked the underwriting assistant to revise the invoice, so it, it was worded that way, I think, because that aligns with the town's insurance policy, which renews from July to July. But we asked the underwriter to revise the invoice to reflect the dates of the project, just so that there's, there's no confusion.
So can we get the invoice with the revised dates?
Yes, absolutely, and actually, I think that was requested earlier, and so as soon as I hop off this call, I'll confirm if that was, if it wasn't, I'll get, I'll get it, I'll get them to tonight.
So, okay, because I was advised, I don't know how many times, by Brad, saying this is for the duration of the project, I said, but it doesn't say it.
Yeah.
So I, if, if we go ahead and approve this, I will wait to give it to finance, to take care of, until I have the proper date on it.
Because you have another, there's another meeting in the month, right? There's another meeting this month.
There is.
Yeah. I'm saying, you don't have to approve it, so that is a big question.
So let's say the roof catches on fire because somebody's doing work up there. The contractor's insurance isn't paying for it, this policy's picking it up?
The, correct, so what's going to happen is, is that Kerma is going to pick up the, the damage to the building, and then they're going to subrogate against the contractor to make themselves whole.
Yeah.
So why, why do we pay for the additional 8,000 for insurance if this policy was always going to pick that up and go after the contractor?
Because the builders, because the property insurance is just covering the building, right? The builder's risk is for, as Geraldine was describing, for theft of mechanic tools, theft or damage of the construction materials and things of that nature, not, not covered under the standard property insurance policy.
The contractor's tools and the contractors, it's not, when you say set of tools and things like that, that's the contractor doing the work, if their tools get stolen?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's part, part of what that policy
Their tools, their materials, things that they're using for the project.
So the town
As well as the equipment itself, so if one of those HVAC units gets vandalized while it's, while it's onsite before it's installed, right, that's another example, or even while those HVAC units are in transit, if they're on a tractor trailer truck and it tips over, it, it covers the, the equipment while it's in transit as well, as well as when it's on property, so.
Builder's risk does.
Builder's risk does, yeah.
But if somebody, the crane dumps a unit through the roof onto the second floor, then this covers the
Well, covers until the, the crane company
Yeah, the property insurance, yeah, exactly, so if a crane drops a unit through the roof, hopefully with no children inside it, then yes, the, the property insurance picks up the, the, the building, the, the property insurance picks up the bill for that.
So Geraldine, question for you, I don't know if you've ever seen this kind of situation, or is it relatively new because now they're trying to sort of cover more than what they did before?
Yeah, we have not seen this before, but obviously, we're going to incorporate this into budgets in the future. I, I think, though, from our point of view, it's, it is understandable, and now we're going to, now we're going to expect it. But no, this is not, this is not coming to play on any project before, for, and Mark can weigh in for anybody in our office, this is a totally new thing.
Yeah, we, we were actually a little surprised to see this, a lot surprised to see this, to be honest with you, because once, once the builder's risk insurance has, has been identified and paid for, typically, you don't see an additional property insurance on top of that, or at least we haven't, and, and, you know, I understand maybe some of the other towns that we work with haven't been doing it right, I, I don't know, but I certainly will keep this in mind as we go forward, it's, it's a little bit of a different approach, but I while I don't like it, I understand it.
Yeah, and the problem is, is that, you know, this is, this is relatively new from Kerma, and I expect we'll be seeing this a lot from a lot of towns doing these small renovation projects. And, you know, I think that the challenge is, as I mentioned before, you know, if you have a $50 million renovation on a $100 million, $75 million building, we can get property, the builder's risk will cover that property insurance all day long. But if you have a 2 million, a 1 million, a $5 million project, no, a builder's risk underwriter can't charge enough premium to take on the amount of risk they would take for a $100 million building for only a $5 million project, there's no appetite for that. And the builder's risk market as a whole, there's just less appetite in general to take on for the existing building, so this is going to be, this is going to be a continuing issue for, for Kerma insured towns.
So Kerma ensures all of the town properties, correct? Buildings, properties, et cetera, is that?
Yes.
That's correct.
And then, yeah, okay. I, I understand now that you're doing this small project, you could literally ruin a $100 million building totally, completely, for a $7,000 builder's risk policy.
Was it, the builder's response, that was also the budget then?
No.
No.
See, with the, what I'm understanding from Brad, is with the Johnson and Rockwell projects, the size of the project didn't create a huge increase in the premium for the builder's risk, tell me if I'm getting this right when I finish, so that the town just absorbed it. Correct?
Well, what, well, what happened with, what happened with Johnson and Rockwell is because those builder's risk policies insured those schools while they were under construction, Kerma actually gave the town a credit, because the property insurance for those schools came off the Kerma policy and went on to the builder's risk policy. And then when the construction was finished, the property insurance that went from the builder's risk policy back on to the Kerma policy, and then, you know, Kerma charged the premium to add it back on.
Right. And unlike the police station, which was new construction, a lot of the insurance was covered by the construction manager until they turned the building over to the town, which then it was like the town's.
Yeah, new construction's easy, in terms of, you know, because, because a new construction, builder's risk will cover that building until you get a certificate of occupancy. So really, from a, from a risk standpoint, new construction's much easier to secure these terms for versus renovating an existing building.
We're getting a lot of feedback on this end, are you guys?
On this end, are you guys? Um, not here, and I know Jack did a bunch of reorganizing the way the microphones are so that the feedback supposedly stopped, but is it a problem for everyone?
I know.
I turned my microphone off.
I'm not logging.
Nobody else is complaining.
I turned mine off as well.
It seems to be better now.
It seems to be better now.
Oh, nope.
Oh, no.
What we're hearing is a delay.
Going to have to check on that.
I just have a question, so what is 30 grand buying? How much is this policy worth, or what is the overall, for the 30,000?
For the $100,000 building? Hundred, whatever.
Well, they say what the building's worth.
Whatever the building is worth, right?
Which is your question, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a separate policy, you can think of it as like a surcharge from Kerma.
Like a rioter, which lasts for a period of time. Yes.
What is the urgency to approve this right now?
Let's do make for tonight.
Can, can, can work take place without this policy in place?
The, the coverage, coverage is in force, so Kerma is not limiting coverage, the endorsement to increase, you know, everything has already been processed, so, right now, it's just, the bill is expanding, but nothing with coverage has been
Nothing with coverage has been impacted.
So the coverage is in place, the due date on this is May 1st.
But it's the wrong invoice anyway, with the date, right?
Yeah.
We need to get the dates updated, which we will do.
Yeah, and, and if you need an extra couple of weeks to get the bill paid, I, I'm happy to ask Kerma to extend the due date.
Happy to ask Kerma to extend the due date.
Okay, if you could get us the appropriate dates on an invoice, we can reprove it at our next meeting, okay?
Okay.
The other thing we could do is approve it tonight pending receipt of the correct invoice, which I would not sign and give to finance until I get that. Yeah, first, yeah. So we're going to wait till the next meeting, yes? All right, and Jason's going to do what he can to get us a correct invoice with correct dates on it. Because the, the first one, the 74, whatever, had dates, not these dates, it actually had I think it had December 2024 to December 2025, which would more than cover. So if we could get something that goes through and beyond the end of the project, that would be helpful.
Okay, and as, and I think it's a good point, and what is, just to understand, what is the anticipated completion date?
What is the anticipated completion date?
October.
Okay.
Right? No?
Yeah.
It has to be done by the end of December, according, right? The end of December or is it some other date in December? Dr. Carver, Tyler? Or Jerryl, do you know somebody?
We have to spend the money. We have to, we have to expend the money by the end of the calendar year. It really needs to be completed by the end of September in order to, you know, for the rest of that.
Right. Cause it's a reimbursement grant, correct?
Did you limit yourself to an end date though?
Saying December, because it's been overrun.
I don't know if I'd say October, people longer.
No, no, no. October is the end of the project. So that way we have thirty days to get.
Yeah, I'm just saying with this invoice, right?
It's gonna go, it's supposed to say the end of December, because that's what the other one said. So if this one could say end of December, that would be great.
Uh, so the reason why I ask is just two quick things. Um, so if the project does finish in October, we can cancel the policy as soon as construction is finished and you will get a small credit back, uh, on the builder's risk insurance. Now, I'm not talking the property insurance, just the builder's risk premium. Uh, you'll get a small credit prorated based upon how much left in the policy period. Uh, and for whatever reason, uh, I hope it doesn't happen, but if the project should go beyond the builder's risk effective date, um, and we need, we need to extend the policy, uh, then there would be a premium charge for that on just the builder's risk.
Yeah, the current contractor's schedule has.
Changes, that should do it. Changes, that should do it.
Okay.
All right. So next meeting, we'll dig into this again. Uh, I don't think we should need any other explanations then, because I think everybody's, everybody else have any other questions? So you'll get that to us, Jason, and then we'll go from there.
Absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely.
So is there anything else on, uh, our high school HVAC project that you need to tell us or that we have questions on? Anybody, anybody, anybody? Good? Thank you. Thank you, Jerryl. And thank you, Mark. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Dr. Carver.
My pleasure, guys. Thank you.
Otherwise. We're gonna move on.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
Yep. Good to see you, Jerryl and Mark.
So in general though, when the, when the budget's put together for this, they had said the, normally you count for the insurance, but for some reason this project, they missed the builder's risk as well as this, I guess. I, I could see this being new.
You're right. So the way that they were explaining it with the way that they looked, I think they looked at it in the same way they looked at Johnson and Rockwell where you know, there wasn't going to be a charge to us.
Both, both the builder's risk as well as this.
The size of this project, what you're insuring the project for, doesn't nearly cover the building, Johnson and everything else. For what the project did,
Yeah.
it was worth more than the bill.
Yeah, I understand that.
Because, you know, that's a, would be interesting to ask, like during major construction at Johnson and Rockwell, where, where they were fricking ripped apart the buildings.
Yeah.
And if something happened to the.
Yeah.
Because they're charging us.
Yes.
For what? The lawyers that it's going to take to sue another insurance company to pay for the damages? That's why I brought it up. I was like, this doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't.
How much is in the contingency though?
Uh, probably now like one hundred and thirty, or was it one oh two?
The, I just looked up the, uh, they, they updated the budget, they updated the schedule. So the scheduled date now is still nine thirty is the end date. I just had it up. So the substantial completion is still nine thirty. And then total demobilization is scheduled for ten eight, for Wednesday, ten eight.
Right.
Um, owner's training is only one day. That's on tenth seventh. As of right now, that's the, uh, thing. I had the, uh,
It's the training, how to use the.
The new, yeah, the new budget they posted today also.
Was that on the shared drive?
Budget tracking, yeah. So it's got the thirty thousand on there that already paid it. I mean, they showed it.
Yeah.
So here, here we go.
Who approved this?
The, oh, the town.
What's the town's insurance, right? They're just adding, hey, you're working on the building.
What was our contingency before?
One forty five and I thought it was gonna go down to one twenty something.
I think whoever approved the insurance.
The way that I'm reading this, it's showing one oh two, nine fifty nine.
Yeah. And then it just comes out, comes to us.
Cause it's part of.
Just, they wouldn't charge anything at this project.
Is that, right? That's what we're funded for. That's what we've committed to pay so far. That's the remaining. That's the contingency, right?
No.
No?
It should, well, it should be that, but it also be in here somewhere. There should be an owner's contingency, owners. No, they didn't put it in. Okay.
Right?
Thirty thousand, what's the value? What is that? What do you give for thirty thousand? Is that a hundred million?
You know.
I don't know if there's only.
Cause that's just like, that's the, the top one should just always be what we.
It brings up the question, you're curious. What's the green district policy?
That's your.
I thought it was more than that. We're gonna have to ask about that next meeting.
Yeah. That seemed low to me. I thought the number was higher too, when I, when I read the new budget today. I thought that was low. Cause I, well, I thought that, I actually thought it was closer to two hundred. Did we start out at two hundred?
Well, we started out, yeah, because it says it starts out here at owner's contingency, two sixty two. But.
Yeah.
I said, that's a change because we agreed to do, um, add alternate two for a hundred and twenty thousand.
That's right. So that, that changed.
Yeah. So it went down then to a hundred and what? Forty or fifty something or whatever.
Yeah. So right now, I mean, as it's on this budget, it's one oh two.
With the thirty?
With the thirty missing, this budget has it in there, the increase to the insurance premiums of thirty thousand, it's on here. So that effectively changes our new contingency to one oh two. Like I said, when we started all this, it was over two hundred thousand.
So we're down, we're down to one oh two.
But you said, but that was also, what I forgot, Tom, was that, that one oh two is also, because we agreed to do a, a much larger, another, we added to the scope of the project, which I forgot about. I, I.
Yeah, that was a hundred and twenty.
I, my math was a mathing right.
I guess, I guess being you, I'm wondering if a hundred and two and we haven't even started a payment.
It seems, yeah. I mean, I'm concerned about it, but I, I'm also new to this too.
Builder, the, the building is newer. We had, we as a commission, when we were putting together the budget for the, for Johnson and Rockwell to go to referendum, then we had, um, Perkins Seesman was doing the plans. They had a, did a cost estimate. We also, I think the town, the board of ed hired ONG to do cost estimate. So get their cost estimate. Came up with an amount which we increased by a bunch because we wanted, we insisted on having an owner's rep. A big argument about that, but turned out to help save us a lot of money, even though we paid for it. And then we, as a commission, requested that we put additional money in a line for abatement. And we just kind of came up with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per school, which we used up real quickly at Rockwell and never used the whole thing at Johnson. So the Johnson helped cover the Rockwell. Those are way older buildings. So a school being newer shouldn't have as much. And they've already done some scoping, testing, that kind of.
Yeah, their handling of it, it's all, right? We already had that test on that said it's all handbag or whatever. Get the exact phrase.
It's a lot simpler than.
It's a lot simpler. There's low risk for it going airborne.
Right, right.
And.
Because.
They do have to bag it, but they can just like throw it.
So we're fairly new. What was the approximate gross amount of this project for the HVAC? Just, just so I.
Approved that referendum is one point four, one, or four point one million, four point one something, something.
Yeah.
Yes.
Contract committed right now to four, four million, seven, uh, yeah, four million roughly.
You know, a little less than half is covered by the grant, a little more than half, I think is covered by the town.
Yeah.
It all had to go to a referendum to approve the entire amount because it's a reimbursement.
Yeah.
Grant. They're not just handing us the money and saying, do what you want.
That grant, I, again, my dates are, I think it's December, that grant, it's December fifteenth.
Is it the fifteenth?
I think it's December.
It's a December date.
You have to have every bill paid. Everything has to be done.
And you have to have requested the last reimbursement.
Yeah. And, yeah, every, everything has to be dated. It's not the, that, you know, I's dotted and T's crossed by December fifteenth. They do not have to give us the funding.
Yeah.
So this, this is state.
Yeah, this is the state.
Yeah, the federal.
No, no.
No, no, it's state.
No, no, state.
And this is money that came year, few years back down from the federal government to the state to use, to upgrade HVAC systems in schools. That was part of what specifically it was to be used for. We applied for a grant, we were denied, and then we applied again and we got it. So having Jerryl working on it is great because she's just got the whole state reimbursement paperwork thing. She and Dr. Carver know how to do that, get it done, get what we want. So Jerryl works for STV.
Yeah.
Um, Johnson and Rockwell, she was the project manager, senior project manager. But now she's kind of more in the background. Rex, the, Rick is the project manager onsite, et cetera, whatever. She's a little more in the background doing paperwork. And, um, I don't want to say just paperwork, because she's just amazing wealth of knowledge. And has been in construction industry since she got out of college, a long time ago. I won't say how long, but that's not fair to her because she's not here to defend herself, but she knows all the ins and outs of the paperwork and, um, with the state, but also putting together budget reports, finding out who's supposed to do what, why they didn't do it. She just really gets into it. She can explain things really well. Glad she was on with Mark, because I think she probably had better he the one. Explain. So, and we won't see her a lot. She's actually retired semi, but she worked for them part time. And she lives in Reno, Nevada. So she zooms, she's around.
I was looking at the schedule. I saw something should have asked Dr. Carver. Does anybody know what the actual end date of school is? Cause they have the, uh, the steel all being craned in the day after the ending.
It's like June.
Not out the, um, before the holiday break. Oh, no.
This is, this is June.
This summer.
This is June sixteenth is supposed to be.
And it should, it should be, um, it shouldn't be changed because we shouldn't have any more snow days.
Yeah.
Graduation is gonna be before the nineteenth. I know that, but I don't think they.
But graduation happens before the little kids get out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they probably did add on. So that's probably not happening at that time either.
Cause they did a couple.
But they can redo that.
Yeah, they have to redo it, yeah. I was thinking I'd do that until I just saw this.
So we're gonna ask him to have a, a budget report to give us, even though, yes, it's in the shared drive, but not everybody went and looked at it. I didn't, I didn't know they put it in there. So, um.
So, you know, that's a good question. So school ends, okay, so.
Then they change all the shifts.
But will there be like a summer school or adult?
No, I, you know, summer. That could change. Summer schools often happens, um, wherever they needed to happen. So when we were doing Rockwell and Johnson, whenever summer school was supposed to happen in one of those buildings, it got moved over to Berry School. So they can do that easily.
Yeah, no. Yeah, they don't have to. Starting the day after the last day of school, their shifts change from two to ten thirty. Everything happens between six or six and two thirty.
Yeah. They're usually out of there by two thirty. The workers, the, the building workers, because they.
It's hot.
And then they shut the, everything down in August. There's nobody in the buildings. Well, actually some of the workers are in there doing like, but the office personnel and anyone else that might be in the building during the day, first two weeks of August, it's shut down. There's nobody in there. But they, it was same with Rockwell and Johnson where some of the office people went and worked at, from Johnson went and worked at Rockwell while they were doing some stuff in the office at Johnson. So they can move people around. They're, they know they have to be accommodating and all staff people have been great about doing what they need to do to help get the thing moving along. So new budget report, and you said the schedule was up too. So we may even look at that.
Yeah.
Gets updated in two weeks, then, you know.
He said, the gentleman that he was near, he's the, I, and the, right, he, yeah, he's, he's the one who always uploads. So he must have done it before he went on vacation.
He might have, yeah.
He'll probably have an update after the state comes in.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that it still says they started some of the electrical work in February. And I think they did.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Cause he, he actually, I think it must have been probably, he said he was gonna be like away midweek to midweek or something like that.
Yeah.
But it must have been the day before he left or something. He was like, I just got this, meaning the invoice, and I, I need explanation, et cetera, et cetera. And then all the explanations started, but then he was gone. So that Mark was in on it. And.
It makes sense the way they explained it. I just.
No, I mean, I don't like.
That, that just seems like it's a big number.
They're double dipping.
Yeah.
Because.
I agree. I agree.
They're never, they're never gonna pay for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're not covering it. Yeah.
But that's a negotiation with the insurance company, you know, that the, the town uses for everything else, right? So.
I mean, like I said, they cover all the town properties, buildings and properties.
Yeah.
So, um, and they do, do they cover, Kathy, do you know what Kerma does? Cause we used to get emails from Kerma saying, go to this workshop, go do this, like workers comp things. So do they cover people, us, or like, are they the workers comp coverage, do you know, or?
Yeah, I mean, they did pretty much everything for the town.
Okay.
We go.
Not health insurance, that's.
Not health insurance, but we go to them for everything else.
They're a huge municipal.
Any, any accidents, any pop hole claims, everything goes to Kerma, like everything.
I just remember getting.
It's like the last day of schools, like June twelfth or thirteenth.
Okay. That's great. So then, all right. So just move on or we have any other school stuff we need to? So municipal center renovations. Um, last time I told you about, I had just gotten that email from Jay Metcalf from BMP about, you know, ninety dot five thousand dollars. So Rachel and I went and met with Dan yesterday to talk about like, ah, what do we do? Where do we go from here? Because we all agree that's a lot. What I don't know, and I have not gotten a reply yet, because Jay said he would ask, what does this building analysis entail? Does that, that mean they're gonna go through the entire building and measure everything? Are they just gonna go and count toilets and say, okay, I got this many toilets? Does that cost ninety five thousand dollars? Probably not.
Or they just review the difference.
Well, they should.
Yeah.
Because they were given them, but what Jay said was, given the age of the documents, meaning everything that Chris Baldwin sent in a, I don't know, yeah, in some kind of compressed file that was accessible. I didn't open it, didn't try it. But I would think that it includes any plans that exist of the building. I'm sure he has scanned them and put them in a file, because you have to know. I mean, you've probably had to access stuff and know what's behind that wall, because it should be on the plans, right?
It'd be.
It should be. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't.
Yeah.
But the building was renovated in nineteen ninety six.
Yeah.
To make this.
Right. So they must have had better plans.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. And that's what I said to Jay, but I haven't heard anything back. I know. Doesn't that seem a long time ago?
Year old, Dave. Yeah, like when you said ninety six, I'm like, Jesus.
Didn't I go to here?
Remember the town hall was over by the library.
So basically, um, what, what bottom line kind of what Dan said was that, well, isn't it the job of the Public Site and Building Commission to advise the Board of Selectmen what to do? And I was like, I don't know what to do. We could go and say, look, it's gonna cost this much. Can we go with it? They'll say no. So then what?
I mean, I would advise do the study, but that's with unlimited funding and whatever. Ninety five seems like a lot of money.
Way a lot of money.
There's one thing we were waiting for Jay on, wasn't he gonna try to find out the difference of whether.
Right. What, what, what does that, their, their building analysis entail? Does that mean they're, like I said, are they gonna go and measure every inch of the building or are they just gonna go and count toilets? Can they take off? And I, I understand that they, meaning BMP, are really busy as well as like Gordy and the company that does all the state contract stuff. Cause I think there's lots of people out there trying to get stuff done. And one of the things that like, last time Jolene was here, she works in the building department. So she knows building department stuff, though she's not gonna quote code and stuff like that.
She probably could though, sounded like.
She probably could, yes. But when I was here yesterday, I was running around, after I met with Dan, I was running around trying to get some copies of things. And I went into the building department and she said, here's an idea, which Chris Baldwin said. So I emailed him, having her back. There are companies and we've used them that do, you know, code review or code compliance review. We had to have that company do Johnson and Rockwell, because the plans were so big that Chris Baldwin couldn't do it all by himself. So we hired a company. They go through, they make sure, and they kind of do all kinds of bullets that have to go back to the architect to update plans so that they're code compliant. And so that the building official knows, here's this list of things that were not on the plans, that were, were not, or these things were not code compliant. We have to make sure there are when the building's built or when the building is done, et cetera. So I'm assuming some of those companies could be available to do something, um, just for, you know, smaller price, not ninety, just to look around and say, uh, how do we keep this area that we're gonna do code compliant?
So does it go by square footage, occupancy?
So I think it's kind of, it depends. So I think it's kind of, it depends on what, from what I was getting from Jolene two weeks ago, sort of goes by what you call it.
Mm-hmm.
Because think about it, when this was a high school, how many hundreds of kids were here every day? And there's the same amount of bathrooms.
Yeah.
As there are now, when a tenth of the number of people or less that are in here every day.
Yeah, but it was built at a different time and the codes and all that.
Well, yes, but still, hundreds of kids.
It's, it's like how much of the ratio, person to bathroom ratio changes.
Yes.
Right.
So it also has to do, from what I was understanding what Jolene was saying, was that it depends on what you call the area. So. And, and we don't want them to be locker rooms, really, when you think about it. I, I don't know, I think I set this out, or maybe there's no electronic. Did you guys get?
I did not get a copy.
I didn't send them, these aren't plan plays, this is just a schematic. If you want one, I couldn't find a colored copy of it, that's what I was running around doing yesterday. So I did the coloring myself with a, um, no. Sorry, Dave, I think Dave Olson has one of these, but, um, this is a copy of what Peter Eckert did this as a sketch. Because if you look at what we have, Dave, I'm sorry, I don't have anything to put on the screen. Um, but if you look at the two bigger, the two bigger spaces, the one that says multipurpose and the other one that says women's and men's. Um, they're, on the original plans, which I only have the one copy of, which I can send around to anybody. I still haven't found the electronic one, um.
That's what's currently there, right?
No, that, well, there is a, I don't know if this is the current. This is a construction plan, I don't have electrical fixtures.
So, this is the proposed, sorry.
This is a schematic of what we would like to do. Because we don't know, because what was proposed, this is the enlarged bathroom and shower plan, which I only made, I only have this one, I didn't make copies of this, which shows that whole kind of multipurpose area, it's a little kind of off, but, uh, multipurpose area being the men's locker room and that the other women's and men's being combined into the women's room. So it was much larger locker room, staying as big as what you remember seeing. We don't need that. And even these that were drawn in, um, these were done in twenty fifteen, and I think they were updated maybe a year or so later. I think we ended up getting a price in twenty seventeen. It had a lot of moving of plumbing, so the plumbing wall is in between the two of them. And if we don't move fixtures off that plumbing wall, we don't have to jackhammer up the floor. That would be ideal, but we may have to still, if they're gonna move the sinks, uh, maybe this, we'll have to see. So what we need to do, I, I don't wanna spend any money on plans, construction documents, without knowing how many fixtures we really should be looking at. If we're off by one, uh, maybe we can push one over or something like that, but if we're off by three, we gotta figure, you know, a toilet, sinks, a couple of showers, a couple toilets, a couple sinks, a couple showers, will that do? Four. Obviously, the gym is gonna continue to be used as a gym, but it's not gonna be the same as it was. It's not, it, it's based on occupancy. I don't know what the occupancy of that gym is. It's not used the same way it was before. You get kids and parents in there doing travel basketball. You get some nights, there's kids in there playing basketball. I don't know if the guys that used to play at noon time still going and play. People don't take showers, they just leave in the hall. And you can't, I think we cannot call it a shelter either, because then it has to be designated differently and set up differently. All of the schools can be shelters, but we don't call them shelters. We just, we know they could be used that way if they had to be, if some big huge disaster. Yeah, in an emergency. So, um, again, I, my suggestion to both Dan and Rachel was, were that we had to have some kind of expert advice from somebody, probably not us, unless all of you together, all, all of us together can come up with some idea what the code should be. Chris Baldwin sent a bunch of information and I was like.
Well, again, the code probably is based on what the use is gonna be, right?
Yes.
So you have to figure out what's the use for it.
Yes.
Who's gonna think? And again, I would think that would be the.
If it wants to hold the bag.
What do they, yeah.
Well, I, that's the whole thing. So if you're looking at the building as a whole, and how many people could fit in the building for whatever, whatever, and then how many toilets do you need? Well, if there's something going on in the GP room, not opening this end of the building so someone can go use that bathroom, that's reality and that's logical, but does that mean that the code follows the logic? I don't know. Who does?
What's that, I can see for a gym.
That's, well, for our gym, I don't know. That would be good to find out, what is it now? Because I noticed that do you remember there was a sign on the wall of the GP room with the occupancy?
That's gone, yeah.
I mean, because it's not a school gym, it's a gym, that's, that's.
Right.
Yeah, just call it parking wreck.
Yeah, I think the fire code say you have to have occupancy.
They have, yeah, I can see it, yeah.
They do.
So if the sign is down, that means.
The occupancy, the fire marshal.
I don't remember what it, what I'm saying is.
See on what the use is.
Yes.
If you say that the gym's a dance hall, the occupancy is much higher than if you say it's a, you know, dining hall. And then, cause then they're gonna say, oh, there's, you have, once you dictate what the use is, then the fire marshal comes in and says, for this many square feet, the occupancy is X.
Cause there were bleachers on both sides that pulled out.
Oh, yeah, they took all the bleachers out, now it's just the one.
There's, yeah. But I remember lots and lots of years ago, updating myself, going to town meetings in the gym where they had all the bleachers pulled out. We were all sitting in the bleachers and when we voted on the budget, he yelled yea or nay, and whoever yelled the loudest won. And that was, you know, y'all tried to stuff the bleachers with your own, whatever you wanted to go, and it was a lot, three, four, or five hundred people in there on the bleachers. You could probably.
You should get fit him because you had the bleachers.
Cause if the whole, yes, because you had the bleachers, because if you think about it, back in the day, when a school would have an assembly in the gym or wherever their auditorium, the whole school would be there, filling up the bleachers, that's a lot of kids.
Yeah, this school probably used that.
Yeah.
For the.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I would say.
So is it not reasonable?
If that gym doesn't meet code anymore, because there's no uh, egress to the exterior.
Right.
You have to go into a hallway.
Yeah.
Which gym, that's like, if you ever go to Barlow, they built a whole other gym because their gym was in the center of their school, in the two ways out.
Go through the school.
Go into a hallway.
Right, right.
And they still use that as a gym, it's only, but they don't, there's no games there, there's no public, they use it for like gym class, that's.
So we almost can't classify it as a gym?
Yeah, I, I mean, unless, unless I was told wrong, but I remember that's the big thing. Reading got the funding and all that for putting in the new, because the gym that's in the middle of that school is huge.
If we look at.
That would seem logical, what you're saying.
So we look at what Peter wrote on the plans here, and I don't, I don't remember if he's with Michael, but basically it's, uh, interior alterations. And then there's a shower area. There's storage. So we wanna, you know, break it, whatever, but a whole lot less in the way of fixture, fixture counts.
But again, that's a good question with the town, do they want showers in this building, right?
Um, I, I think we wanna have a couple, like one.
Yeah, yeah, it would make sense they would want that if people like, uh, were, were they using for air conditioning stuff, he wants some sort of hurricane or something, he wants showers, but.
Which happens to you, I mean, think about, uh.
Yeah, listen, I wouldn't have a shower.
So in twenty twenty, August twenty twenty, when we had the tropical storm, we didn't have as many people here as we had in twenty eleven, or twenty eleven and twenty twelve, after Sandy and Irene, Irene. Yeah, there were people stayed here for two weeks during that time, getting food and not just charging their things and going home. You can, in the middle of the summer, it's not so bad to be home without stuff. In the middle of winter, it's not as easy. Um, like, just calling it enlarged bathroom and shower plan, so it's bathrooms and showers. So that's probably, and the company that Jay said that they would like to have work with us, that's done school stuff, and so he's doing municipal type buildings. But again, how do we?
Just study, right?
I think so.
I just ask, so there's no way, even if it's an informal meeting, you get the fire marshal and somebody from the building department, just to go down there and look at the plans, at least they can say, well, I need this, this, you know, well, you've got to, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, again, they might ask, well, what do you want to do with this space? What do you wanna, what, what, what do you want to do?
Right, right, and at least they will say, wow.
So, no, because, think about it, think about it, if you wanted to, uh, remodel your kitchen, where are you gonna have the building inspector come over and tell you what to do?
Well, no, but the plant, well, they got a plan, yeah.
The difference is there, you, you know it's a kitchen, and that's what you want as a kitchen, right?
Well, if you were gonna remodel your whole entire house, you wouldn't have, Chris would not come to your house and tell you what you need to do. You would hire an architect who knows the code.
Right.
And so that's where we are, is who, how.
But again, that architect knows you want a kitchen. That's what I'm saying, like here, you just, you don't, you don't have it defined what it is, right?
But.
Chris can't make that determination, from what Jolene was saying.
Yes.
And the building's too big and there's too many uses for him to. Yeah, he, that's what I'm saying, he needs to know what this is gonna, what, 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 what is, what is this, like? But I think even if we said we wanted to be a gym, a locker room, or a changing room, I don't think Chris can really input much because of the size and scale of the building. Yeah, but he can say, he can say.
I understand.
Yeah. What the code is for, you know, those bathrooms, so.
Right.
I think it made sense for us to come up with the use that we want.
Yeah.
And, and talk to the code compliance company.
Yeah, see.
But I don't think that's just us, I think if it's a parking wreck.
Let's label this as, well, I mean, the person who you, who's gonna be using this the most, who's input we need, is Rachel.
Right.
Rachel needs to say, these are gonna be our parking wreck headquarters, whatever she wants to call it.
Right, right, right.
And they're gonna service the use of this gym.
Yeah.
But we are, this is, you know, and what do they got? They got offices here, right?
Well, those are, um, so those are, those are not offices.
Oh, they're not offices?
No, it's more sto, it was just like random storage, even because Rachel had said that she needs storage.
Okay, so parking wreck, uh, you know.
Cause if you're coming from the gym this way into some of these existing.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if you.
There is a coach's office, a coach's office, a coach's storage, yeah.
Yeah, it's parking wreck headquarters. Why do you need these bathrooms? Well, because we're keeping the gym, it's already here.
On this side here?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a school street here.
Yes.
Yeah.
North is this, I can appreciate what Jolene was saying last time, if you wanna like analyze and maybe have a best use scenario, but I think that's just getting too far afield.
Yeah.
Right, 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 yeah.
That's what I'm saying, if we can get reach, I mean, obviously, everything here is parking wreck, parking wreck.
Right.
Multipurpose from parking wreck, have her, what do we call it, this?
So, and Rachel's at the meeting with Dan. And, I mean, this sketch, and it's literally a schematic sketch, I mean, we don't even know if it's doable the way it's put up, but it's a start. With the concept of making the sort of bathroom shower smaller. Because Rachel had said, what we really need in this building, meaning we park and wreck, for the town, because she basically said, yes, we use that a lot, but it's also, what does the town need? What's the town want? Well, it's still gonna be used a lot by parking wreck. She was saying they need a big multipurpose, some kind of space for like classes or.
But parking wreck have the classes in a way, like some sort of.
That's what I'm saying, but classes for, yeah, you could do yoga in there, you could have some weights in the corner and you can have like one of some kind of strength.
So it's almost like a parking wreck center, essentially, the building. And I would argue she probably needs that partner commission on the same page what she's thinking through, right?
Right, so I did ask too, because we, as, as a public site and building commission, I'm sorry, seven member commission is appointed by the board of selectmen. For any project we do, board of selectmen can appoint two additional ad hoc members from the project. So for the schools project, we had two people. For the police station, we had a officer, one of the officers, a couple different ones as they moved through and retired, et cetera. Uh, library, we had a library board member. So I asked Rachel, I said, think about your commission, do you want someone or two people on? They have to be, they have to live in town, because they have to be town people to be able to vote on stuff. Like Tyler would be great for the HVAC project, for the, he lives in town. So.
Me to do the HVAC and then I became a regular member.
Was that?
This, I was the board of ed.
Oh, yes.
Member of that now.
Yes, because Dave Olson was our board of ed member, uh, along with Bob Germanero. And then Dave became a regular member, Bob stayed on as the board of ed one. Keep trying to get him to join us, he's like, being retired, so, um. So, yeah, a lot of this, sort of the idea of the way this, this, this schematic is set up, I mean, some of this stuff is existing, the election storage is there, it's probably not gonna change that. But the other, the hallway needs to be cut in, and hallway from the other side, the bathrooms, go back to be the way they were. But, um, yeah, if I get some info from Chris Baldwin, and then we can look at, um, you know, what, what would it cost for them to advise us? Because one of the things that Dan said was, you know, you're, you can we could just put out an RFP, almost like a design build thing, we wanna renovate this area, how much is it gonna cost for plans, construction documents, and to do the work? That's, you know, the whole entire project. Is that a little too unwieldy? Should we come up with plans first? Because maybe we could get a grant at some point?
Well, yeah, there's no shot at a grant with no plans.
Right. So I kinda like the idea of having plans first, but we have to have some sort of, a little bit more than this concept from somebody. So we'll see what, what Chris comes out with, and then we can see if we can maybe.
Yeah, I think that's actually a really good idea.
Yeah, because if there's.
Get like advisory.
Yeah, because if there's a, um.
Sure, it won't be ninety-five grand.
Well, it won't be. If something is under fifty thousand, I think, you don't have to put out an RFP, you can ask for competitive quotes. So you can contact two, three people, put it out there, and then we'll see. Then we would have to go to the board of finance, the board of selectmen, board of finances, ask for the money. Wait till after the budget.
Yes.
I like Jeff's idea, call it the parking wreck center, just a senior center.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and if, and again, just get Rachel, whatever she wants, and there is, that commission, their commission agrees.
Town recreation.
There you go.
Well, I mean, I mean, you look at some towns, they have entire buildings dedicated to that.
It's fine, now.
Richfield wreck, please.
Yeah.
So it's really.
New towns got.
You've got a whole campus.
Yeah.
With overflow.
But I'm saying like.
Well, right, there's a huge, so if you look at, if you, you're under walking around in there, this, this is, this is this space here. It's like bathrooms even have stuff stored in them, it's all stored.
There was stuff all over the girls' showers.
Park and wreck does need to go through it and weed out some stuff that they're not using.
Sure.
A bunch of that could end up in the dumpster.
Yeah, or use it during camp or something, and then they'll put it back.
It's basically though, it's, it's fully storage, an activity range, and overflow baths.
Yes.
That's it.
Cause the biggest thing that happens there on a regular basis is the little kids, the preschool program. Right? Yeah, they're, they're, they're every day. They have a huge chunk of stores that they need.
Dave's gonna do.
I would adjourn.
All favor?
I, I, second.
Yay. Oh, thank you. Where are you going?